Is June 22nd, 2020. Denise, could you take the role of attendance of board members?
Patrick Halpin.
President.
Mike Caffaro.
President.
Frank Santos.
President.
Julianne Nolan, she's absent. Jerry O'Neil. Not yet, right? Dan Truchan.
Here.
Edwin.
Here.
Town Council Rich Casey. Environmental Rich Groh. Planning Matt Esposito.
President.
Thanks very much. We have a public hearing. I plan change of zone Denise. Do you want to take it from here to?
Sure, I'll read the planning board statement. The planning board shall have the right to rely on any information that is presented by the applicant. If any such information is later found to be inaccurate or incorrect, the planning board may determine that any approvals, building permits, or other actions previously granted in connection with the application are null and void. First item on the agenda is public hearing, site plan review, change of zone, planning board job number 20-04AE 181 Merritt Avenue, Inc. Propose to change the zone from E Business to C Residence in order to construct a two-story colonial-style, single-family dwelling.
Before we get started, I'm just going to read something into the record as well. Tonight, we have two public hearings on the agenda utilizing the Zoom video conferencing application. We will have the applicants joining us to present their application to the board and answer any questions. Following the presentation, we will individually call upon members of the public who have registered to speak regarding this application. Individuals will be promoted from an attendee to a panelist in order to voice their comments. For the record, there are no members of the public registered to speak on planning board job number 20-04AE 181 Merritt Avenue, Inc. There are two members of the public registered to speak on planning board job number 19-46B Marty Holmes LLC. This hearing is also being live streamed on the Town of Babylon YouTube channel. Following each presentation and public comments, the public hearing will be closed. The record for each matter shall be held open for a minimum of seven days. As long as the record is open, any member of the public who did not register to participate in tonight's Zoom meeting can provide comments on the application by two methods. By regular mail, addressed to the Town of Babylon Planning Board, 200 East Sunrise Highway, Lindenhurst, New York, 11757, or by email to planningcomments@townofbabylon.com. If you have any questions or require any additional information, please call the planning department at 631-957-3103.
Matt, thank you very much. We have counsel for the applicant. Could you please introduce yourself for the record?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Nicole Blanda. I'm an attorney at Bezzell, Blanda, and Conti with Auto-Sink at 535 Golden Hollow Road in Melville. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, 181 Merritt Avenue, Inc. In connection with the recommendation for a change of zone from business E to residency, as well as site plan approval for the proposed dwelling. The site's on the northeast corner of Merritt Avenue and North 25th Street. It's 5,000 square feet, presently vacant. As I said, it's zone business E, but it is surrounded by residentially zoned properties and residential use properties, as well as the L I double R, which is across the street. So the applicant and owner believe that this would, the best use for this property would be as a residential home. I believe the neighbors would appreciate that as well. As you can see, Mr. Esposito is showing on the aerial photo. This is one of the last lots on this particular little strip on Merritt. A home clearly fits here. That's what we're seeking to do. It would be a colonial-style home, four-bedroom, three-bath, open-concept kitchen family room, very attractive. I'm told that the departmental review has been completed, that there's no open comments, that everything has been satisfied in that regard. And again, we believe if a commercial site doesn't fit this area, I have gotten variances for other 50-footers on this block on North 25th, and I'm going to be presenting that to the ZBA obviously at some point. All the covenants, the applicant would consent to all the covenants, you know, single-family, owner-occupied, accessory apartment. But you know, it's pretty straightforward. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Start with any questions. You alluded to the commissioner's memorandum with various conditions and restrictions. Do you have any concerns, objections, to what is in the memo?
No, no. I see the covenants and restrictions, one through 10.
Okay. So you accept all of those restrictions and conditions?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any of the members of the board? Are there none, Matt?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, I've asked if there are any of the members of the board, the planning board, questions. So far, nobody has offered a question, so I want to turn it back to you. There are no questions from the board.
Okay. We also have no members from the public registered to speak on this matter. If the board would like, we could bring back next week for work session resolution for a recommendation to town board for a change of zone, and we can also simultaneously extend the record until July 27th, 2020. That will give the public an opportunity to comment via writing if anyone did not have an opportunity to attend tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, what was that extended date?
July 27th, 2020.
So we were going to extend the public hearing to July 27th? Is that what you said, 2020?
Yes, and we can also, if the board wishes, to bring back next week for work session resolution on the recommendation to town board for the change of zone.
Okay. Do any members have any? Hearing none. But I need a motion to extend the record. To what date is that, Matt?
July 27th, 2020.
Could I have a motion by Frank? Frank, motion by Frank? I don't hear.
Frank is muted.
Okay, by Dan? Dan, you there?
Yep, motion.
Second by Michael?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Hearing none. The record is extended 27th, 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Blanda is the attorney for the next application as well, so I'm just going to remove Philip back to an attendee.
Okay.
Just as a note for the board members, I'm having a little bit of trouble live streaming to YouTube. The connection is not going through, but the meeting's being recorded, so we will try and work and get it up after the fact onto the town's YouTube page.
Matt, do you want to switch me to host and see if I could get it from here, or you want to leave it alone?
Um, we could do that. Let me. Okay, you're the host now, so let's see if you have any luck.
All right, saying it's preparing. No, it's not going for me either, Matt.
Okay, I think there's a YouTube issue, so if you want to make me the host again, just so I can manage the attendees. Okay, we're okay to proceed to item B on the agenda.
Okay.
So item B is public hearing subdivision, planning board job number 19-46B Marty Holmes LLC. Proposal is to subdivide of three lots into two new lots, demolish the existing dwelling, and erect two single-family dwellings.
Hey, thank counsel for the app.
Nicole Blanda, same appearance. I'm here on behalf of Marty Holmes LLC. We're seeking subdivision into, from three tax lots into two pools. Each one would have a single-family dwelling constructed on it. We did receive our ZBA approval back in August of 2019 for all variances that were required. Sorry, my screen just seems to have gone down. Can everyone still hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going. I love technology. So the premises is known as 1075 Hawkins Boulevard in Copac, its own residency. Presently, it's improved with a two-story dwelling and a one-story garage, all of which would be removed. We have 120 feet of frontage on Hawkins and 100 feet of frontage on Brookside Court, so it has a whole lot area, 12,000 square feet. As the dwelling currently exists, it doesn't comply with front or rear yard setups. The structures are currently, you know, they're in disrepair. The applicant purchased the property to construct two brand-new, two-story dwellings that would be mirrored. Each new lot would have 6,000 square feet and 60 feet of frontage. Again, we did obtain all variances that were required back in August from the ZBA. Each home would have four bedrooms, two and a half baths with laundry on the second floor, and an internal garage. So there's an internal garage plus driveway, so we feel that we do have adequate parking. Both driveways would be accessed off of Hawkins Boulevard. As far as the surrounding area and some other prior approvals that were subdivisions, immediately to the rear, the approved two-lot subdivision, those two parcels are actually 50-footers, 111.1 and 111.2. They actually front on Copac Place. Again, they're smaller than what's proposed here because they're 5,000 square foot parcels. Immediately across the street from them are 50-footers and 60-footers. On Brookside Court, you also find 60-footers, 65-footers. It's really a mixed area ranging from 50 to 70-foot parcels. Visually, on Hawkins, between Pleasant View Court and Brookside Court, there were three dwellings. Between Copac Place and Scudder, there are three dwellings. And so now between Brookside and Copac Place, there would be three. So visually, it would look the same as the other streets, so it would keep in character with the area. We reviewed the covenants and restrictions. I have that memo here in front of me.
So you have the memo from the commissioner? You reviewed it?
I do. We reviewed it. We have no issue with any of the covenants, you know, single-family dwelling, owner-occupied, no accessory apartment, no further subdivision, all the usual. There's the rendering of the new homes. They would be finished differently, so they don't look exactly the same.
All right. Thank you. Do any of the board members have questions?
No.
No, Frank? Dan?
No.
No? Michael? Ed?
No, looks good.
No, no.
Okay. All right. Matthew, how do you want to proceed?
All right, so we have two members of the public who are registered to speak on this application. The first registered participant is Joel Watson. I'm going to promote Mr. Watson to a panelist, and we'll listen to his testimony.
Okay. Mr. Watson, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, good evening. My name is Joel Watson. I currently reside at 414 Pleasant View Court in Copac, about two blocks from the proposed subdivision.
Okay, before going further, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
All right, so yeah, my name is Joel Watson. I've been living at 414 Pleasant View Court for about four years. I live in my house with my wife and my two daughters. Moved here to Copac because I liked the area. The taxes were reasonable. It seemed like it's a very diverse area. I do oppose this subdivision of this lot on Hawkins. Firstly, is because I don't, I disagree with counsel. I believe that it does not fit in with the character of the neighborhood. Most homes that are on that particular street are larger properties. If you've ever been on Hawkins Street, it's a very beautiful street. They typically have large, well-kept homes, and I don't believe it actually fits in with the plan of the neighborhood. Counsel also mentioned that the property's still standing. It's not. The property's been razed. I drive past it every day, and I don't believe that it was in disrepair. I believe the property could have been rehabbed and fixed, but the property was razed about three months ago, and I assume that was with the intent to subdivide the lot. Another additional concern is traffic and parking. Brookside Court is, you know, a main thoroughfare into like the heart of that neighborhood, and where Brookside and Hawkins intersect, that's a very busy intersection. I do believe adding two homes would also, I mean, I think it would be dangerous because you'd have more traffic in that area, and I think parking would also be an issue because, I mean, a lot of people rent homes in Copac. Yeah, so I mean, for those reasons, I would strongly oppose the subdivision. I think a single-family home on that lot would be more ideal, and I think it will also fit in better with how the neighborhood is currently.
Okay.
And also, I would like, you know, counsel to address, I mean, she did say that the property hasn't, is still standing. I mean, it's not, so I would like her to address that point as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I'm going to move you back to an attendee where you can view the rest of the proceeding. Mr. Chairman, I believe we have one more member of the public registered to speak. Her name is Linda Lane. I have her in here twice, so I'm going to promote both her video and it looks like phone number as well. Ms. Lane, can you hear us?
So I dialed in. I could just do it on the Zoom if that's easier?
Ms. Lane, I think we can hear you. I'm just going to mute your phone because it seems like your webcam, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear? Okay, to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Lane, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Linda Lane, Green Lawn Terrace in Copac, New York.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
The whole truth, yeah.
Nothing but the truth. Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Okay, well, basically, I agree with everything Joel Watson said. I'd also like to add, for any of these variances that have been already done for companies like the LLC of Mr., whatever. But as for companies that come in and want to make money for, in the Copac area, we do not have a hospital in the Town of Babylon. I cannot get down Great Neck Road to my home without sitting in traffic. Police cars cannot go down the street safely. I agree, it's very dangerous. As the other man pointed out, that Brookside is a main road, and we don't need another street sign. We don't need another stop sign. We need to have no, you know, we have enough housing in the area. Hawkins is a lovely area. There was no reason that that just can't stay a single-family home. If that, whoever bought it, bought it with the knowledge that Town of Babylon was going to give him a variance because possibly he's getting all these other variances in the area. I think that's a disservice to the citizens of Town of Babylon and certainly Copac. We have issues with overcrowding here, as I said, hospital, no hospital local. Traffic is a terrible problem. The schools, I don't know. I know the schools have been having problems with, et cetera. So I guess that's basically it, but I strongly oppose any more variances anywhere in the Town of Babylon. I strongly oppose this variance. As was said, there's a lot of big properties on Hawkins, which are nice. They cut down all the trees that were there. If you had seen a before and after, it's kind of a disgrace already that they already cut down the trees in preparation of building homes instead of having natural trees, just even for pollution purposes. And, you know, the Southwest Sewer District, when it, you know, we just can't handle any more excrement or, you know, bodies. I strongly oppose this building of two houses instead of one.
All right. Thank you. Do any of the board members have any questions, Ms. Lane?
Well, could they, or could they explain why they would consider giving this a, why they would consider giving it a variance, why it would be?
We're here, we will, we haven't made a decision. We're, right now, we're getting testimony from you.
I would like to know, though, when the decisions are made, because some of the other decisions that have been made don't make sense to me in the area based on hospitals, you know, hospitals, traffic, schools, environment, and so I'd be curious for that as well.
Thank you.
I'd like it in the record, yes.
In the record.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. I'm going, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to move Ms. Lane back to an attendee before we proceed.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for participating. Do you want to, do we have the counsel come back to some of the issues that were raised by Mr. Watson and Ms. Lane?
Sure. So as far as, I presume the home must have received a demo permit and was demolished, so that was my mistake. If the house isn't there, I believe him that it's not there. I did not have a chance this week to go visit the site. As far as the variances, all the variance relief that's being discussed was granted back in August of 2019. I don't recall neighbor opposition at that time. It is a little while ago, so I can't say whether or not there was, but I don't remember there being a discussion with opposition. However, regardless, the variances were approved by the zoning board. With respect to traffic, I know that the town traffic consultant didn't see an issue with the two driveways on Hawkins. The driveway for the, for what's considered parcel A is far from the corner. You know, it is a certain distance. It's not right on the corner of Brookside Court. And I know that, I believe it was Cameron Engineering that took a look at it and had no issue and didn't really comment any further on it. So, you know, between the internal garage, the 30-foot driveway, we do believe we have enough parking for each house and that there wouldn't be an issue there. So I think those were the two major issues that I had understood from the two individuals that just came on to the hearing. If the board has any further questions, you know, if you look at the tax map, or I guess if you look at the aerial that we have, the radius map, there are 100 by 100-footers as you go south of Pleasant View, on either side of Hawkins. But as you go north of Pleasant View, you know, particularly, like I said before, between Pleasant View and Brookside, and Brookside and Copac Place, the character changes a little bit, and you have a variety of sized parcels, as you can see on the aerial. Again, that's all zoning board jurisdiction. You know, we did, we did obtain those variances, but just for the board's edification, that was the thought process behind it.
All right, thank you for putting the board questions.
Yes, hello, this is Richard Casey. Ms. Blanda?
Yes.
We understand that the variances, the dimensional deviations were addressed by the zoning board in 2019. In furtherance of the queries from the residents, can you touch a little bit more on the essential services that they were worried about? They mentioned not only traffic and parking, but police, hospital, maybe fire, and, you know, location. One of the applicants said there were no hospital in the Town of Babylon, which I don't know if that's factually accurate, but if you could tell us maybe what your understanding is about the essential services in the area, that would be helpful.
I mean, this is, it's a single-family dwelling. So you're talking one extra dwelling versus two. If there was a single-family dwelling and it had an accessory apartment, the density there would be two families. So in other words, the essential services would be servicing two families versus two separate homes. I'm not aware of an issue or, and I don't remember fire prevention or the Fire Marshal's Office making any claims like that. I don't know if Matt has any further information on that, but I don't, in departmental comments, that didn't come up, wasn't raised as a potential problem.
For the record, we have no open comments from any departments at this time.
Do any other board members have questions? No, hearing none. Matthew, we need to keep this record open?
That's correct. There are no, there are no open items from any of the departments, but we have some public concerns that were raised, as well as to give anyone who didn't register for the Zoom an opportunity to provide comments. We recommend extending the record one week until June 29th, 2020.
I have a motion to record to June 29th, 2020. Motion by Ed?
Motion.
Thank you. Second by Michael?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Anyone opposed? Hearing none. The record will stay open June 29th, 2020.
Okay, Ms. Blanda, I'm going to remove you and make you an attendee as well, if you want to stay or if you want to hop off.
Okay, thank you.
Just to note as well, I don't know if all the panels have seen, but Mr. Watson did submit an additional comment in the chat requesting a traffic study at the intersection of Hawkins and Brookside before a decision is made. So if we just want to note that somewhere in the record, that written comment.
All right, let's note that for the record.
I think, Mr. Chairman, you can probably move on with the agenda to C, which is an amendment, a script nose error on the Linzer Products Corp. Approval, specifically the negative deck, which was listed as an uncoordinated review, and it was a coordinated view, and as Mr. Groh and I discussed a few days ago, it was actually uncoordinated originally, and the applicant asked that it be coordinated, so there'd be no further loose ends at the end. So that's the amendment that is here in C today.
All right, so do we have a resolution? Or is that what we're looking at here?
Yes.
Okay. Denise, we need to?
You need a motion to approve the script nose error for the negative.
Okay. Could I have a motion from Frank? Frank?
Motion.
Okay, second, Dan?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. The resolution is approved.
So item D on the agenda. So item D on the agenda is an architectural review, application number one three four eight six nine, Dan Kialy, LLC, expansion to an existing house.
Matthew?
Yes, this is just a second-story addition to a home on Second Street in West Babylon. Items have been addressed from planning.
Do you have any questions? Hearing none. Could I have a motion by Ed?
Motion?
Second by Michael?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution.
Yeah, acceptance of minutes from June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, Michael?
Perfect. They were perfect, top to bottom, flawless rendering, all quotes accurate and completely specific.
Okay, Michael? Second by Dan?
Second.
The minute, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty? Aye? All, are we in favor? I need a...
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Here, no, okay, approved.
Now we'll go on to page three, and the public hearing, December tenth, two thousand and eighteen, job number fifteen dash thirty-five A E on at Chordery.
Hold on, don't we have one here on, that's the twenty ninth, I'm sorry, no, Michael. Okay, Michael, you're on it?
Yes, so on this application, we are still pending comments from our traffic safety department. I followed up with John earlier this week, or later last week, rather. We recommend extending the record until July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, while those comments are pending.
All right, could I have a motion from Ed to extend the record?
Motion?
Second by Frank?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Yeah, we're going to move to page four, and the public hearing date, December ninth, two thousand and nineteen, planning board job number nineteen dash twenty-four A K, Conklin Street Partners LLC.
Matthew?
This is the application for a concrete crushing facility. We are still working with our traffic safety department internally to address just a matter regarding the, any proposed upgrades to the existing traffic signal located at the driveway entrance to this property. Otherwise, all other comments have been addressed. We're pretty close to hammering out a solution there, so we recommend extending the record one week till June twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Okay. Could I have a motion from Dan?
Motion?
Extend the record, second Frank?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved.
Now we go to page five, public hearing date, March second, two thousand and twenty, planning board job number eighteen dash forty-five A E, M R Property Builders LLC.
So this is the matter for a multi-res proposal on Albany Avenue. The board has discussed the traffic concerns that were raised, and we've requested the applicant to prepare a traffic report or analysis on whether or not a four-way stop sign is warranted at the intersection of Albany Avenue and Rainbow Avenue. We relayed that message to the applicant, and I believe the applicant is proceeding with reaching out to the traffic engineering firm to prepare that study for them. They haven't gotten back to me yet, but we are under the agreement or understanding that if some type of traffic counts are warranted for that analysis, it will be performed in the month of August. Based off conversations we've had with professionals in the traffic engineering field, we believe that August may represent a more closer-to-normal traffic patterns due to the whole COVID nineteen situation than any other month, May. So the board, I think we all kind of agreed to that, and we relayed that to the applicant. With that being said, all other departmental comments have been addressed, and if the board was so inclined, we could bring this matter back next week for a work session resolution for a recommendation at town board for the change of zone, and then extend the record until August tenth. That way, the applicant can proceed with their track of getting sent and scheduled at the town board level, and then the planning board can withhold their site plan approval decision until we've received that full study back and have had a chance to analyze it.
Ed, when do you have any questions about that?
No, it sounds, sounds good. Sounds, sounds very good.
All right. So what are you recommending, extend the record?
Till next week.
So that would be to, yeah, that would be to bring back for work session reso next week for the recommendation to town board for a change of zone, and then we can also extend the record out until August tenth, two thousand and twenty.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? No? Could I have a motion by Ed?
Motion?
Second by Dan?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you.
Next public hearing date is June eighth, two thousand and twenty, planning board job number eighteen dash thirty-eight A, Educational Bus Transportation, Inc.
So this matter, we had a site plan review a couple of weeks ago. The only outstanding items were just, the applicant had to address some drainage structure issues. Those revisions were submitted on June twelfth, and we're just waiting comments from environmental and engineering. I'll touch base with both departments, but hoping to get comments back soon. Recommend extending the record just one week to June twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty.
All right, could I have a motion to extend the record? Let's see, motion by Michael?
Motion?
Second by Ed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
That's it on the agenda for tonight.
Anybody have any other issues or matters that they'd want to bring to board's attention? Do you? Rich?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Richard? All right.
I mentioned something real quick. We have sort of a land use conflict just to the east of the Merritt project. So the upzoning to residential is probably a good thing. So I just want to make note of that. We've been involved with that for the last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. Else? Well, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting, and Denise, you're going to be the official timekeeper.
Motion to adjourn at seven forty-four.
Okay, motion by Ed?
Motion?
Second by Frank?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven forty-four.